It is 5:30. I'm calling the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meister?
Present.
Councilmember Beltran?
Present.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Present.
Vice Mayor Carrillo?
Present.
Mayor Flores?
Present. I have a question for legal counsel. Do we ask permission to add the item in closed session now before we go into oral communications?
Yes, that way oral communications can be directly heard on it.
Would you like to present whatever it is we're doing in closed session? Because I know it's an emergency, it's an emergency item that has been brought to the table.
Yes, Your Honor. Staff is requesting that the counsel consider adding an urgency item to the closed session agenda, and it has to do with the claim of Julio Cesar Garcia, Julio Garcia Jr., and Jesse Elias Garcia, and some facts came to light after the distribution of the agenda packet.
There's a need for city council to at least consider taking action before the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendations.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to add the item in emergency. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous, five zero, so we will add the item.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the city council on any matter scheduled for closed session unless additional time is authorized by the council. All commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? No. Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll now go into the city council closed session items.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have eight items before you this evening. The first is pursuant to government code section 549-56.8, conference with real property negotiators, property 29 North Plano Street in Porterville, agency negotiator Patrice Hildreth and Jason Reidenauer, negotiating parties, the City of Porterville and the California Military Department under negotiation terms and price. Item two is pursuant to government code section 549-56.95, liability claim, claimant Jordan Jacobs, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item three, pursuant to government code section 549-56.95, liability claim, claimant Christopher Newby, agent claimed against City of Porterville. Item four, pursuant to government code section 549-56.95, liability claim, claimant Mark and Maria Alvarez, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item five is pursuant to government code section 549-56.95, liability claim, claimant Hill International, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item six is pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Cecilia Nunez versus City of Porterville et al., Tulare County Superior Court case number 295475. Item seven is pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D3, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, three cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And the last item is pursuant to government code section 549-56.9D4, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, two cases.
I just have one quick question. So the item that we added, would that fall under item seven and be four cases, or is that a separate item?
It would be in addition to that, and it would be a pursuant to government code section 549-56.95, liability claim, claimants Julio Cesar Garcia, Julio Garcia Jr., and Jesse Elias Garcia as claimants.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is now 5:34, and we will now go into closed
Thank you, Mayor. On item number two, on a motion by Vice Mayor Carrillo and seconded by Councilmember Wyrock in a five-zero vote, that was the claim of Jordan Marie Jacobs. That claim was denied. On the claim of, hold on one second, Christopher Newby, on a motion by Vice Mayor Carrillo, seconded by Councilmember Wyrock in a five-zero vote, that claim was denied. On item number four, claim of American family connect property and casualty of subrogee of Maria and Mark Alvarez, on a motion by Councilmember Wyrock and seconded by Councilmember Meister, that claim was approved for $21,879.85. And finally, with the item number, make sure I have it here, five, on a motion, and that's the claim of Hill International, Inc., motion by Councilmember Meister, seconded by Councilmember Beltran in a five-zero vote, that claim was denied. Thank you.
Thank you. I invite you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Wyrock and remain standing for an invocation.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come and do an invocation? Please do so.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the wonderful weather that we've had with the wet period again, two years in a row. Thank you for delivering us from the drought, Lord. We are so thankful for that. We hope that we have many more wet years in front of us, Lord. We hope and pray for that. Be with us this evening as we conduct the city's business. Help us to weigh the things that we need to understand the trade-offs that we'd serve the public and we serve you in the best way that we can. In all these things, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that you remain standing just for a brief moment of silence for the four officers that we lost in Charlottesville, North Carolina. And we will now move on to the presentations. The Employee of the Month, Patricia Medina, are you here? Please come forward.
Officer Patricia Medina started with the Porterville Police Department in September of 2021. Officer Medina was selected for and assigned to the Traffic Unit in June 2023, and shortly thereafter, she was selected to serve as Field Training Officer. Officer Medina's experience and knowledge of traffic collision investigations and traffic enforcement have been beneficial to the success of the Traffic Unit. In March 2024, Officer Medina received an Exceptional Performance Award for her outstanding efforts in reducing traffic collisions, which included identifying high collision intersections, the primary collision factors, and issuing citations for those violations. Issuing traffic citations is a key element to maintaining safe roadways and reducing injury traffic collisions to keep our citizens safe as they traverse the city. As a Field Training Officer, Officer Medina ensures that her trainees are learning and understanding the proper methods and ideals that make an excellent police officer. Officer Medina has strong work ethic and is a proactive officer, regularly signing up for extra details such as DUI checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, and assisting patrol with staffing. Officer Medina is a role model for her trainees and fellow officers. Officer Medina is well-liked by her peers and treats her coworkers and the citizens of this community with fairness and neutrality. Officer Medina enjoys quality time with her 15-year-old son and enjoys maintaining her personal fitness. Officer Medina's hard work, dedication, and professional demeanor reflect positively on the Porterville Police Department, and we are proud to congratulate as the City of Porterville Employee of the Month for May 2024.
Well, I want to thank City Council for the award, and my department admin, and my immediate supervisors, Sergeant Starling and Cora Ayew, and Ayew being patient and guiding me in the right direction, and my partners, Officer Pofa, Miss Suze, and Grau. Thank you guys for coming. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Reidenhour, the Outstanding Business Award.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Calderon will be providing this presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Wait for the slide to come up. Poor Richard's Pizza and Beer has been a beloved establishment in the heart of Porterville's downtown district since 1971. Initially named Poor Richard's Pizza Barn by founders Richard and Mary Ellen Freeman, the pizzeria has been a staple in Porterville for over five decades. Mike Freeman, their son remembers starting out working there after school, washing pots and pans in grade school, and in 1977, Mike Freeman took over the management of the establishment following his parents' footsteps. In September 2021, Christian and Victoria Diaz purchased the business, continuing its history of being a locally-owned business and its legacy of an iconic pizzeria. Poor Richard's has always held a special place in the hearts of the Diaz family, as it's where they both met and worked. The Diaz family has implemented subtle improvements at Poor Richard's Pizza and Beer, including the addition of 12 televisions, a fountain beverage machine, and kegs for draft beers. The enhancements are carefully curated to uphold the restaurant's original charm. The 25 original bar stools, the iconic sign on the historic brick wall. the iconic sign on the historic brick wall alley, and the autograph poster from George Strait to Richard Freeman in the dining area all serve to honor Poor Richard's rich history. Amidst these changes, the delectable pizzas crafted from original family recipes remain unchanged, preserving the essence of tradition and quality. They make roughly 50 pizzas daily, and that's during the week, and on weekends upwards of 100. With a steadfast commitment to honoring tradition while embracing innovation, the Diaz family has not only preserved but enhanced the essence of Poor Richard's Pizza and Beer, thereby contributing significantly to the economic vitality of downtown Porterville. The introduction of live music events has injected vibrancy into the pizzeria, attracting patrons and fostering a lively atmosphere. Embraced by the community, the Diaz family's stewardship of an iconic establishment has been recognized for its dedication to preserving its legacy. As a cornerstone of the Porterville community, Poor Richard's Pizza plays a pivotal role in fostering local economic growth. The Diaz family continues to uphold the tradition of community engagement by sponsoring local youth sports, hosting events, and collaborating with neighboring small businesses. Beyond merely serving pizza, they cultivate a welcoming environment that serves as a hub for community to come together. Looking ahead, the Diaz family remains committed to enriching experiences at Poor Richard's Pizza and Bar, ensuring that it remains a cherished destination for patrons. Their dedication to sustaining Poor Richard's legacy in downtown Porterville remains unwavering. With a dedicated team and a loyal clientele, Poor Richard's Pizza and Bar anticipates many more years of success and continued contributions to the local economy and community cohesion. Please join us in congratulation, Poor Richard's Pizza and Bar, as this year's first outstanding business.
Once again, congratulations. Priceless. They thought they were in trouble when we showed up. All right. We will now move on into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. You will be asked to please state your name and city for the record. If you are here for the public hearings number 16, 17, and 18, please hold your comments for when those items come up on the agenda. You will be given the opportunity to speak at that time, and we will once again continue to adhere to the three-minute per speaker time period so that we can continue in an orderly fashion proceed with the decision-making responsibilities this evening. Is there anyone that would like to come forward under oral communications? Please do so.
Brock Neely, address on record. I'd just like to say that the parade Saturday was a wonderful event. Thankfully, the rain held off until after the parade was done. Just a kind of an invitation, my husband and I and several other people will be going out Sunday, the 26th of May to Veterans Park at 9:00 a.m. to put flags out at all the memorial markers. Now, a note on that, there are two of the markers that have dead trees. One marker has no tree, and the U.S. flag and the POW flag are both shredded. They need to be replaced immediately. Then Fernando, here's some information. This is just an FYI on something that I've done in protecting myself from some malicious activity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward under oral communications? Please do so.
Jenny Chumey, Porterville, no address. Can we get some adjustments at U.S. Army? We need some adjustments up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Evening. Ed McCurvy, excuse me, Ed McCurvy, District Four. How you guys doing tonight? I read the water report that the state put out this week, and it was very favorable. I was really glad to see that. They were talking about adding 4 million acre feet to the aquifer and saving 9 million acre feet with storage this year. So we've had two really good years. I was really happy to see that. I know we have a long way to go with 50 years in the hole here with 80 million acre feet behind. We got a long ways to go, but it was nice to see that positive, and it comes from a good wet year. There's still some weird things in the report that talk about how climate change is going to mean we're going back into a drought or something. But as you guys know, and I've written about this quite a bit, we live in a drought-flood climate. That's not unusual to have a drought and then a flood. So hopefully, we get a few more years, wet years, before we get the dry years again. They're coming. But I did like to see that we have that advance on the water because you're going to talk about changing the water tonight, back to two times a week, which is great. And I know that our citizens continue to conserve without punishment and do a very good job of conservation in our city. I would like to recommend or suggest that you change the drought response to conservation awareness and something of that nature and promote that. And I would like to also suggest that you remove the penalties that were put in place that were overreaching to punish someone for using their own water that they bought. That's a problem. I also noticed that you're having some things on the agenda tonight about car washes, and I don't know a lot about that. I read through the regulations and what's on the agenda, and I just wanted to make a statement about this. You know, charitable organizations, as we go through this economy with the inflation, are struggling. And, you know, sending kids to camp and doing things over the summer, car washes are important to churches and our local charities. It just seems odd that we have a, we would have a local nonprofit that's registered with the government and the state to do charity work, but they can't do that charity work on their property with water that they buy with their people without getting permission from the city. And if they don't follow the rules, they get punished for $100 and up to $500. I don't know why that was originally written, but I would strongly suggest that in the idea of rollback of regulations, that you take some of those things into consideration and maybe make an exception for churches so they don't have to go through all that rigmarole. We need to trust our churches and our nonprofits to do the right thing. And I really think, you know, you don't need to ask for permission to have a charity and a car wash. We've got all kinds of other things we need to be working on in this city. That's what I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCurvy. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so. Okay. Sehna, do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. We will now move on to the reports.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have the third quarter fiscal year 2324 staff informational reports before you this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Does council have any question on the staff reports? I just want to say thank you because I like to see the updates as they come in, and that's my only comment. Anyone else have a comment or please?
Yeah, a quick one. I really appreciate the street performance report, well, all of the reports actually, and the filling of potholes timely. I was just curious if there might be a different mix that we could put on these recurring potholes that happen. Not sure if we're keeping a spec for low-weight vehicles on city streets. Javier, maybe I could talk to you or city manager at another time, just to have our patches and our potholes filled with something that's more sustainable. And I really commend the production of our departments to get so much paving done. You know, you look at these reports in here, and they really did a lot of paving and street repair. So I applaud that department for their efforts. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, please, council member?
Well, it's more of a statements. I'd second Dawn on that. Great job on the roadwork that's being done, the maintenance that's continuing. Looking forward to the continuation of that. Something that was added to the My Porterville, for code enforcement quarterly report, it's not on here on this quarterly report, but it was added to the My Porterville app, and that is homeless encampments and being able to report on illegal encampments in the city. So I think that's going to be a good addition going forward. Hopefully, people utilize the tools that we provide. And then I've received some calls on the golf course about more golf carts, and I've talked with staff, and I just kind of want to go on record with it. The reason why we don't have more golf carts is capacity. We can't have people golfing on top of each other. So, and it is a big loser, but it's something that our community uses. And so it's something we're looking into, but as far as future golf carts, more additional golf carts, it's not something on the table right now. So that's just all I have. Martha, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much for the reports. We will now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. We have items one through 15. How does council wish to proceed if there are no noted conflicts or any other items?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar items one through 15 as provided in the agenda package.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. It passes unanimous, five-zero. We'll now move on to the public hearings.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have three public hearings before you this evening. The first is the permanent local housing allocation, requests for proposals, funding recommendation and amendment to the five-year plan, and Director Calderon will be presenting this item.
Good evening again. On December 5th, 2023, the council authorized staff to distribute RFP 2223 SR 1957 for permanent local housing allocation, which is the PLHA program. And the program funds for year one, two, and three specifically for navigation center, emergency, bridge housing, and permanent supportive housing operations, and remaining for administration up to 5% for a total of $292,542.48. Of the RFP available funds, the city council awarded PLHA funds in the amount of $174,048.27 to three respondents. At its February 202024 meeting, Central California Family Crisis Center, referred to as CCFCC, their application requested a total of $94,973.53 for PSH operations and was awarded for only one proposal for the amount of $54,974.53. The additional $40,000 for PSH operations for a second project was not included in the initial funding recommendation as that project was not funded by HUD through the local continuum of care competition for PLHA. And that was, PLHA funding was requested from match funding to that HUD funding. So since then, the project has been funded with HAP5 funding, and CCFCC would like for the city to consider now funding the initial request for $40,000 less $614,000 that was requested for admin but is no longer available, for a total of $39,386. If awarded, the amount of unsubscribed funds remaining for PSH operations will be $79,111.21. Since PSH has been undersubscribed for the past two years and the need for emergency shelter has been greater than PSH, there is a need to amend the five-year PLHA plan to reduce the total available funding for PSH operations and instead increase the emergency housing operations. Reallocation of more than 10% of funds among these activities require an amendment of the plan with approval granted by city council at a publicly notice meeting, public meeting, and final approval by HCD. The $79,111.21 of unsubscribed funds plus the additional reallocation for years four and five to avoid this issue for the remaining two years of the five-year plan would together trigger an amendment to the approved five-year PLHA plan. Staff is proposing to amend the PLHA five-year plan to address unsubscribed funds for PSH for years two, three, and allocations per categories for year four and five. The allocation recommendation consists of a reduction of funds for PSH by 2% for year two, 11% for year three, and 10% for year four and five, and increase in funds for emergency and bridge housing category of 2% for year two, 11% for year three, and 10% for years four and five. So the recommendation is that city council award CCFCC the amount of $39,386 for the total 94,359, all these cents and 53 cents for permanent supportive housing operations, and also to hold the public hearing to receive the public comment on the proposed five-year plan amendment and reallocation of funds. And if then approved, adopt the draft resolution approving the number, amendment number two to the PLHA five-year plan and authorizing its dismissal to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and the amendment and draft resolution are attached. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much for that report. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 6:58. I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forth on this one item?
Brock Neely, address on record. I'd just like to commend Claudia and the rest of the community development team for all the hard work they do on all this stuff for housing elements and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward on this item? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. It is 6:59. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Any comment, questions? Councilmember Beltran?
I'll just make a brief comment. This is a lot of work behind the scenes, as I'm learning. We'll be getting some numbers hopefully in the next month about the progress the community, at least the city of Porterville is doing in this endeavor. But again, I want to second what Mr. Neely stated, is this is a lot of work behind the scenes by staff to track the funding, making sure it's all in a timely manner, that the projects are approved or in the scope of what the target is. And I'm just impressed by the numbers when they're made public. We're really using this really well. In the last link meeting, I'll brief it later on, that there is funding needed for the permanent supportive housing. There's individuals ready to be housed, but there's not funding right now. So this is really needed, and we are making progress. We're not throwing good money after bad. There's actually some really good numbers coming, and can't wait to share those with the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock, any comment, any question?
I didn't, but just to clarify beforehand, but just a clarifying question. The report's saying that PHS has been undersubscribed.
The report saying that PHS has been undersubscribed, and we want to take money from that to put it towards emergency housing, and yet there's a need for more money in that area. Could you elaborate, or will you elaborate later?
If you don't mind, I can answer that question. So what there is a need for is vouchers to sustain the permanent supportive housing needed. So there's not enough vouchers to continue to house people to then pay for their housing. So the operations is what we were funding through here, but if there's not enough beds, then you can't create another project to fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meister? No comment? Vice Mayor? I have no questions, no comment. How does council wish to proceed?
I'll make the motion as recommended by staff, number one, two, and three.
And I will second that. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous, five zero. All right. We will now go on to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next public hearing before you this evening is a substantial amendment to the 2023-2024 Action Plan for Use of Community Development Block Grant Funds. And again, I will call on Director Calderon to present this report.
Thank you, City Manager Hildreth. So as an entitlement grantee, the city of Porterville receives federal formula community development block grant, or CDBG, funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. This entitlement provides the city with an annual direct grant to provide decent, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities primarily for low to moderate income households or persons. Annual actions plans are adopted on the use of those funds. Entitlement grantees must have a balance no greater than 1.5 times its annual grant remaining in the line of credit 60 days prior to the end of the program year. A substantial amendment to the action plan is triggered whenever one of the following is proposed. A change in the allocation priorities, or a change in the method of fund distribution, or a substantial change which increases or decreases the amount allocated to a category of funding within the city's entitlement grant programs by 25%, or to implement an activity using CDBG funds for new programs that were not described in the consolidated plan, or to change the purpose or intended beneficiaries of an activity approved for CDBG funding. So the city identified a need to reallocate funds in order to meet that 1.5 timeliness rule. The amount of funds needed to be reallocated exceeded that 25% limit that would trigger the substantial amendment to the 2324 Action Plan, and a public notice was issued on April 5th, 2024 indicating that 279,864 would be reallocated from the multi-sports field improvement project to the Section 108 loan repayment activity. After the initial, the initiation of the substantial amendment process and the publishing of a draft 30-day comment period, HUD advised city staff to submit a minor amendment while the substantial amendment was in progress, as the date of the second public hearing and council meeting fell after the May 2nd deadline. The minor amendment was submitted to and accepted by HUD on April 26, 2024, with the approval of a minor amendment which allowed the city to reallocate $184,856 of the proposed 279,864 from the 2324 Action Plan entitlement listed above. Only $95,008 needs to be reallocated now through this substantial amendment. The funding recommendation made by City of Porterville CDBG Citizens Advisory and Housing Opportunity Committee at its meeting on April 18, 2024, prior to the minor amendment approval, is being presented tonight. The recommendation is based on feedback received through the outreach conducted in accordance with the citizens' participation plan, including a community meeting, a public hearing meeting, a 30-day public comment and review period. As of the writing of the staff report, no comments have been received. So a description of the reallocation is detailed in the draft 2324 Action Plan Amendment with added language to incorporate the recently approved minor amendment. So the proposed amendment detail is provided as Exhibit 8 to the attached draft resolution. And what you see here in these charts is the original amount approved, then the minor amendment that HUD suggested we do, and then the proposed amendment, which is just the remaining amount that would need to be approved by council. If that's so, the recommendation. So the recommendation that staff seeks is that city council adopt the draft resolution approving the proposed substantial amendment to the 2324 Action Plan and direct staff to submit the amendment to the 2324 Action Plan to HUD. And staff's available for questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 7:06, and I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forth on this item? Please do so. We have no one. Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, it is 7:06, and I will close that public hearing. Any comments on the tie-yes? No questions?
I just, I have a statement in support.
Please.
You know, I recently got contacted about some volleyball players and just not having the resources to fit our community, and so this is something good that's coming forward. And my fear is that with inflation continuing on, when exactly is this project supposed to start? And what I'm getting at is, is this enough?
So, sorry, excuse me. So the project that is referring to here is the mini pitch project, and so it's like an outdoor arena soccer, small fields. They're lighted. We are in the process. We're looking at, to be about a year out, looking at that. We were continually pushed forward with it. We have some grant funds we've been applying for. We're also looking to use the proceeds of the sale of the Heritage Center to the school district to fund that.
And I apologize, I'm mixing projects here. Gotcha. And that's just with inflation and the way things are going, I'm concerned that we may be in another position in a year to where we have to do this again. But we'll address that at that time, it sounds like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment, any questions on this item? Counsel? No questions? Okay, how does council wish to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the draft resolution approving the proposed substantial amendment and direct staff to submit the amendment to the 2324 Action Plan to HUD.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passes unanimous, five zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to the next public hearing, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last public hearing before you this evening is a consideration of vacation of a portion of College Avenue, and Director Sanchez will be presenting this report.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth. Mayor, members of council, this is the time and place set for the hearing on the proposed vacation of an improved segment of College Avenue at Main Street. Excuse me. Porterville College is implementing their facilities master plan for the campus, and as part of that plan, the circulation of College Avenue will no longer extend directly onto Main Street as a new road, which is Triumpho Avenue is planning to connect Main Street and Plano Street south of Jameson Stadium, and the remainder of Collevo Avenue would veer south as College Way to connect to Triumpho Avenue. The College Way and Triumpho Avenue roadways are currently being constructed by Porterville College to city standards. College Avenue was conveyed to the county attillery for road purposes as reported September 30th, 1950, which was then transferred to the city through the annexation of the area recorded June 17th, 1970. The city has the authority to vacate this street segment under Sections 8320 through 8330, Part 3, Division 9 of the Streets and Highways Code of the State of California. Porterville College has a sole proprietary interest in the property front in College Avenue, and they are also the requesting party for the street vacation. Staff believes that there are no problems with any other reversionary rights. The street vacation is necessary for the proposed development of the Porterville College facilities master plan. Should the city council approve the vacation of the segment of College Avenue at Main Street, the vacation will not only be recorded upon acceptance of the two proposed roadways, College Avenue and Triumpho, College Way and Triumpho Avenue, excuse me, and the recordation of an easement for the utilities that exist within the boundaries of the segment of College Avenue that is to be vacated. At that time, the city clerk will process the recordation of the resolution of vacation and required utilities easement. The recommendation is that the city council open the public hearing and take comments for their consideration, and consider providing direction of staff to bring forward a resolution ordering the vacation of an improved segment of College Avenue as part of the acceptance of the two new roadways, College Way and Triumpho Avenue, the recordation of an easement for the utilities that exist within the boundaries of the segment of College Avenue that is to be vacated, and authorize the city clerk to record the resolution of vacation and required utility easements at that time, or that provide direction on how council would like to proceed with the matter. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do see representatives from the college and the audience and the area as well. I appreciate that. I'm going to open up the public hearing. It is 7:12. I am opening up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forth? Please do so.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Doyle. I live at 1728 North Casey Lane in Porterville. Our business is Farmers Tractor and Equipment Company located at 1132 South Main Street in Porterville. I'm here tonight to address the council regarding the closure of College Avenue, which honestly is a very small portion of a multimillion dollar project going on with Porterville College. And it is also part, an integral part of the Triumpho Road expansion project. Closing College Avenue opens up Triumpho Road. Our business and approximately 27 other homes that share a common property line are affected by this project. We first addressed the council on March 19th regarding our concerns about this project, which in all honesty has lacked transparency and accountability. Our major concerns are the location of Triumpho Road and the fact that we, the community business owners, were not notified in advance. In fact, the first knowledge that homeowners had about this project was March 9th, when the construction crews showed up to break ground. We have written letters, we've made numerous telephone calls to council members, we've met with city and college officials, and a member of the KCCD Board of Trustees. We've researched city ordinances, the city general plan, environmental impact reports, government and education codes. We've been told by the city officials that the college and school districts have sovereign immunity, while at the same time, we read through the education code 81951, which relates to community colleges in states. The board shall comply with all applicable county and city zoning, building, and health regulations. We've also learned that government codes that govern zoning requirements have been rendered virtually meaningless as a city ordinance, as well as City Ordinance Section 300.11AF that applies to screening of property lines. You might ask, what does this have to do with College Avenue? Well, it has to do with College Avenue because closing College Avenue again opens up Triumpho Road. Now, with all this said, we have made progress. I would like to express my appreciation to the three council members sitting before me who took the time to speak with us and who assisted us in coordinating a meeting with city officials. I would like to thank Patrice Hildreth and her staff who took the time to meet with us. And I wish to acknowledge Daniel Reed, who is a liaison between KCCD and Porterville College and the community. We have moved from our position of having absolutely no screening wall whatsoever to having something. We still have differing opinions about what is equitable, but we are making some progress. I want you to consider this tonight when you're thinking about the closure of this road and some of these big picture items that relate to this project. And as I close tonight, I wish to challenge the city, and I wish to challenge the college that sits behind me. And if I may have just a few more minutes.
I'll give you 30 seconds to summarize.
Notifications. This will not be your last project with the city. I have challenged the city officials that even though they were not required or so told as they were not required to send notifications, there is no such prohibition that would prohibit that. It is your responsibility as a community, leading this community, to keep your constituents informed of what's happening. The general plan, as of March 12th, your general plan did not encompass this massive expansion project for the college. How are your constituents supposed to know about that? And the last would be the college. The Porterville College, as I understand it today.
I'll give you 20 seconds.
Much of the stress and distrust about this project was created by the community college that lacked, that lacked the ability to conduct outreach or include the community. People living adjacent to this project were never considered community partners. And if I'm not mistaken, Porterville College has a work group right now addressing their next master plan, and there is not one community member on that group. I would challenge this governing body and the governing bodies that oversee these projects to consider these things.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Please do so in the public hearing.
Hi, Sean Byers, 244 East Worth Avenue. I am a property owner that is going to be affected by Triumpho Road project. I first want to acknowledge Patrice Hildreth and her staff. Thank you very much for meeting with us. Really appreciate it. Also Greg Meister and Mr. Wyrock. I contacted everybody. I invited them all out to my house to see how this would really look and how it's going to affect me and the rest of the 27 families, and it's going to impact us tremendously. Noise is going to be a big issue. It's going to be a huge issue. That field has been vacant for as long as most of us have been alive, and it's going to be a big, a big deal. But through the, through the help of Daniel Reed back there, he's, he's been a good liaison for the college. He has worked with us, and we have, I think, come to an agreement on screening, but it still doesn't comply with city code. But we are, at this point, happy to have that. Again, I appreciate everybody that's helped us, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Mike Giacominie. I live at 892 Immigrant Pass Road, Bakersfield, California, and I am the associate, I'm sorry, I'm the vice chancellor of Finance Administrative Services for Kern Community College District, which is Porterville College as well, and I am here to talk about the vacation. This has been an ongoing communication and discussion, especially with our partners across the street, with the middle school and elementary school for, for more than, more than 12 years. We initially started putting this in our master plan back in 2012, and it's been an integral part of the communication and the relationship with them to ensure that we can provide a safe environment for, primarily for their student body to be dropped off and picked up, and not having to deal so much with the community college traffic getting in and out of the college as well. And we believe that this is going to be beneficial for that relationship. That being said, we do understand that there are some challenges with, with some of the road construction and our neighbors. While we have plans and they've been approved and we've gone through our processes, we do realize that there's an impact, and we're working heavily through Daniel Reed, who's been, who reports to me and is a wonderful employee and has been handling this with utmost dignity and respect. And we believe that we can come up with some solutions to continue to try to work forward to have the best relationship with our neighbors, because at the end of the day, they're still our neighbors, and, and we are a college of the community, and we want to ensure that we are, we are looked upon that way. And so we will continue to have those discussions and see what things that we can do, and with some of the help of the city, we've been able to come up with some solutions, especially since the city will be taking over the road should the council approve the vacation and the acceptance of the new road. That will hopefully provide an environment to reduce the amount of foot traffic near the property line, as well as the visual and visual impairment so that people can't necessarily see into their properties, as well as the noises, to the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth on this item? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. It is 7:00. I took Plano out to college and all the way around to the neighborhoods where Mr. Hatfield lives and the Luthers in the property jurisdiction. I drove it not only once, but twice. And I ended up on the side also as well, coming around onto Main where Tractor Supply is to visibly see what was going on. And when, having been invited and having seen that there was already a council member present at the meeting and there was another council member that had gotten involved, when you have more than two council members and you have a third one involved, that makes, constitutes a serial meeting. And we couldn't do that, so we had to remain distant. I want to share that I have had conversations with Mr. Byers. We reach out, we just give direction to the city manager. I did reach out to Mr. Corquins and had a conversation with him, and I'm sharing that here for transparency reasons. And to let you know that he and I had communication to this regard, and he shared with me that he had spoken to the constituents around the college. And then again, working with the college district himself, and we both pretty much said, staff to staff, that they will work together and left it at that. But I wanted you to know that there has been communication. And I appreciate very much the communication that the staff has had with you and that there had been that outreach and that the staff has worked as well with the college staff. I'm going to open it up and bring it back in. I'm going to reserve comment, but I wanted to put that forward here, right now. Councilmember Beltran, do you have any comment or any questions? And if you have any questions at the college, we have the representatives here.
No, I love hearing from both parties about working together to find a solution. I think the common thing with negotiation, if both parties aren't happy, you found the middle ground. And that's maybe where it is sometimes. But to the residents, you know, I just want to be mindful that we are aware of these projects. A lot of times the city doesn't have a say in how these projects develop. I'll give you Lombardi School, Granite Hills, and even the SCIA campuses in Burton School District that are developed in kind of a quieter rural, almost borderline county. Some of these were county at one point. And for the residents that are in that area, it's a big red flag for them, like, oh no, you know, what type of a traffic impact is this? Pedestrians? And all the things that come along with that, you know, the South County Jail out there by the airport was another issue. There's sometimes it's, it's hard to, we don't, as a, I don't want to speak for everyone, but myself at least, for speaking as a, as a council member, to put our thumb on any kind of activity in our community that's going to help the development to see this. Development in the college master plan to develop a larger campus and more opportunities, I believe, for lodging as well is a welcoming sight considering that if you see the University of Merced expanded, that could have been in our community, but it's not. And so Kern County Community College is here, and they've been good stewards with developing education in our community for higher wage jobs and better trained, you know, individuals that we'll see go into our local businesses. I feel for you guys. I lived near this area for 16 years. I was in the county and then the city annexed me and it was like an ouch because I loved some of the freedoms that the county allotted, but it was slowly embracing, knowing I was so close to the city limits, it was a matter of time before we did get annexed. And unfortunately, that's just part of the growth of our community. I can imagine some of the members in our community that can go to the, you know, part of it was 7,000 people and here we are today in all the development. I'm not that old, but I remember when everything around Walmart, there was fields. And it's funny to think about that now when I tell my kids, you know, there was nothing out here. So I'm glad to see some progress that you guys have on that. The design looks great. It's going to beautify that area. And I hope you guys continue that communication and that relationship with each other with not just this development, but any future ones.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock, any comment? Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for this good report. It was nice to hear that there's been some negotiations between the college and the residents. And it is really nice to hear. There was a couple of other concerns that we heard about possible, well, we heard about noise again this evening, but there were some lighting concerns and maybe ball field locations and if there might be a possibility for some relocation of those items. I don't know if there's been any discussion about that as well, but I know that that was something that was, was brought to my attention. The, the design looks beautiful. The, the segment of the area to be vacated on College Avenue, I get that you want to give it up so that there's not an impact to people bringing their children to and from the school. But just looking at the map and knowing where the road goes in, I, I guess having that gone, it produces a lot of flexibility for pedestrians to cross the campus, much safer. So I get that. The recommendation here, I have a question about the recommendation from staff. Item two, consider providing direction of staff to bring forward a resolution ordering the vacation of an improved segment of College Avenue. And that's separate, I believe, but it goes on to say, as part of the acceptance of the two new roadways. We're not discussing the acceptance of the two additional roadways, just the abandonment of College Avenue. So is this paragraph worded in a manner that reflects that? Maybe it does, maybe I'm just reading it improperly.
Yeah, the, the vacation, it's expected the vacation cannot move forward unless the conditions of 304 Avenue and College Way be completed and accepted by the city. And once, so once they're accepted, that they're final construction, then the vacation procedure would go forward.
How quick would it be to bring a vacation matter back to the council once the negotiations are finalized and we kind of have a win-win with some people a little bit unhappy and other people a little bit unhappy, but at least an agreement? Does it just take a couple of weeks to get it in the agenda and then published and then we're back here again in a month or two?
It'd be when construction would be completed at the soonest, so around three months. And then, and then we just, so we'd get the public hearing process out of the way, and then the next part would just be the formality of moving forward on the resolution of vacation.
Sounds like there's been good headway in just the past three weeks. So that's my only thought at this time. I'd like to reserve any other comments for another moment, if I may, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Well, that was interesting, Don. You kind of made me have a brainstorm. So I just want to disclose that I've talked with Sean Byers and Stacy Doyle's and John Corquins, and I also wrote the vice chair of Kern County College Community, or Community College, but whatever the name is. The Brown Act, you, you could contact all of us. It's when we start communicating is when we violate the Brown Act. So you're, you guys were doing the right thing and, and trying to raise your issue to the highest level that you could possibly take it to. So hats off to you guys on that. Question, and I don't know if it's Mr. Reed that needs to answer this, but what kind of fencing are we agreeing on? I haven't got to hear, hear that. Is there, is the, could you come up and talk about the fencing that may be the settle? If, if that's okay.
I'm with the Kern Community College District. I'm at 4806 Polo Club, Bakersfield, California. I've been the one communicating with the residents and working between the college and chancellor and the CFO. And the, we have gone through three or four discussions on fencing. We've talked about block, we've talked about chain link. We're at a position right now because of the height of our property and their property, a block wall would only be five foot on their side and six foot on ours. So really, they can still see over, so that it really doesn't help the situation. We've been talking about a metal post with a wood type fencing, and we can actually, per code, we could go up to seven feet without any restrictions as far as the California Bill code or going through DSA. So that's what we discussed. We didn't talk about the thin redwood. We're talking about like inch and a quarter, inch and a half, almost like a decking material.
Oh, wow.
So it gives it a little bit more thickness, blocks a little bit more sound, and I think for long term, it's more durable.
And, and that's, that's what I wanted to get to is long term. So once Triumphant Road becomes the city's road, is the fence part of the city's now as well, or is that their fence?
Well, through the, the process, there'll be either landscape, lighting, and maintenance district formed, or there'll be a maintenance agreement for the different plantings as well as the fence.
And, and so layman's turn for me.
The, the college district will be responsible for the maintenance.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, that answers, and so we're at a point where we're happy? No?
I think.
You, you could come up, come up and speak into the mic. I think it's better that way.
I, again, I would say, I wouldn't say that we're happy, but we are in agreement with this fence. Daniel Reed today, just today, told us that the fence would be an inch and a half thick, which will provide quite a bit of sound dampening. I'm all right with that. And seven foot tall, that, that's going to make it, make a big difference. But still, I mean, city code says block. We'll take what we can get on this. It's better than redwood, and that's what I was afraid of. They'd put some thin redwood fence in that would be destroyed very easily. This right here sounds like, from what he's told us, we haven't got to see any detail on it, but what, what he's told us is it will be a pretty substantial fence, so.
So we found a happy medium, it sounds like. My, my other thought is, you heard the block wall's only going to be five foot, so that, that's not going to meet what you're wanting as well. But I just want to thank Porterville College for, or Kern County, whoever it is, thank you for working with us on this and, and trying to find a happy place. What about, is this just word of mouth? Is this, is there a contract? How is, as far as the fencing?
Right now, in the process of putting design together to get proposals to get the fence built. I've actually went out and measured it. I have about 1,700 foot of fence that needs to go in.
Gotcha. And I want to thank city staff for meeting with them and making adjustments to try to make this come together. You guys have really done a killer job on this. My thought off of Councilmember Wyrock's push there is, maybe we, we wait until we have something in writing. And, and it's not nothing against you, but that, that's just my, my thought out loud. He kind of made me think of that right now. If we push it off until we do have a final look at what it's going to look like, and I don't know what that exactly would look like, or we go through and wait for the resolution. But that's my opinion out loud. Thank you.
I'm looking at legal counsel for direction.
Yeah, I'm trying to get staff, because staff's going to know this better than I am, but I'm just going to interject because I don't want there to.
I was going to look at legal counsel.
I don't want there to be this misconception that, that somehow if the city had control over this project, we could require this wall. That it, that our development standards would not require the wall at this time. Am I correct on that? Just want to clarify this.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Block walls are a requirement of development. And when we put a new roadways, it's simply the road.
Right. So I think it's, I think it's great that the, that these groups have come to this agreement because honestly, this is something that we, that the city couldn't necessarily force. I just wanted to put that out there, that I think it's great that there seems to be a compromise, and I'm really glad to see that the community college district is doing that. But I just want to make sure there's not this misconception. I didn't want that in the record that somehow they're, otherwise it could have been required. So.
Yeah, and I, I apologize if I put that out like that. I, I am very thankful that you guys are trying to work with our community members. It is a great thing and, and we greatly appreciate it. And this expansion, I know it's, you guys aren't favorable of it going on in your, your backyards, but this is going to be a good thing for the greater good of the community. So I'm, I'm very thankful that we're finding a happy medium. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you, colleagues up here on the dais. I think these are really good questions and points. Thank you, community, for the feedback. That's always very helpful. But I'm really glad that the Kern College Community District was here this evening to share both sides of information. So we're able to get a lot of information as we have concerns from emails and things like that. And if we know that there's already two council members involved, the only thing we can do is interact individually with staff so that we're getting information quickly as well. But I, I do appreciate hearing or being reminded about the master plan that the college district had from 2012 there. The last thing I just want to say, I really, really appreciate the work that's going on behind the scenes with the liaison, the college. And, you know, I, I have to acknowledge our staff because once all this started, obviously we all have concerns. When the community has concerns, then we have five different opinions about, you know, and all the, getting all the questions and information so that we know exactly what's going on and can start raising any concerns. But I think from that moment that the community came in to our meeting at city council, our staff started working on, on outreach to communicate, whether it be with the college and different officials, board members, community. And our staff has, I mean, several of them have really, I think this has been a really extra load of effort. And I appreciate them for doing that so timely, so quickly, and being so respectful to each side to gather the information needed so that we are able to make informed decisions and know what's going on. Thank you.
I'm going to chime in with another comment. And just so that you are aware, the day that you came to speak to us under oral communications and it was addressed, I did reach out to Dr. Habib and indicated to her and specifically said, you had members of the college surrounding area in your district that came to us under oral communications, and they expressed their concerns to this regard. And again, immediately that was done. On the following day that you were here, I reached out to her to say, this is what's going on. These are the concerns. And moving on, there has been a lot of communication that has been made and the outreach. And again, I don't know, I did drive it, and I reiterate that because I can see, I can see the concerns. I saw it. I saw the dirt. I saw everything and then the alignment of where that road is. And I am pleased to hear with regard to the fencing, I attended, one of the staff members and I attended a meeting at the college when they were discussing, it was opened up to the community, before this even was brought to us, before you came to the table. And it was to discuss the plans for the school and the road was in there. It was disclosed at that community meeting. With that being said, and a lot of dialogue, I'm going to thank both sides of the public and the college for being here this evening. And I'm going to bring it to council to ask where it is, they would like to go with it.
If I may, just a couple of other comments. I was waiting to hear if they would come out, and I would not make the comments that I'm about to make. I really appreciate the concern that the college district has for the student bodies and. and reaching out to the schools, making sure all the people will be safe. I'd like to congratulate the, the college for their ribbon cutting for the Allied Health Building and other development that's occurring out there on the campus. The expansion of educational opportunities is huge, and it's right here in town, and it's available to our residents, their families, as well as people from outside of the community that might start to enjoy the city of Porterville, and maybe upon graduation even help bring more high-paying jobs here. Hearing about a higher-type fence makes me feel good, a thicker fence. One thing we haven't heard tonight is the security for the property owners. I want to make sure that you guys have the opportunity to feel safe on your property. Again, I'll talk about the design and the location of certain things and lighting and the other types of physical impacts that you might experience as the, the plan develops, and if those could be resolved in advance, that'd be great. And maybe it's okay, instead of the, the diamonds, you know, hitting the ball to the southeast, maybe they hit the ball to the north, northwest. And, and, but the lighting is gonna be the lighting, and that's just a part of sports. But be a great backyard to sit in and listen to the cheers sometimes, but I know it could be overwhelming. But then, I also noticed that there were some gates on the property facing the new street, and I'm not sure if the design's gonna include some nice gates for the property owners to be able to get in, out of their backside of their property. They are large parcels. I know it might be a little, you know, you'd have to practice safety, of course, and not have a curb to jump over to get into the gate. And it was really nice to hear about the, the maintenance of the, the fence, you know, the graffiti or possible graffiti getting cleaned off, the damages to the fence, graffiti getting, taken care of right away would be really important to me. And then, then there was one other item. It's not really just a road, but it is a thoroughfare that'll be going, you know, through a roundabout and creating a whole lot of benefit for the community. But there's, how do I want to say it? The notifications for the school districts throughout the state of California, sounds like it's just, they can do what they want to do. And, and I think that's wrong, and I don't think we can solve it here tonight. I don't think calling an elected official and saying, "Fix the system," is gonna work. But I would like to encourage this council, our staff, and future council members that when an activity is going on in this area of development on, on college campuses where we don't have as much control as we typically do, that we get invited to the party just to help bring notifications. I applaud staff for the transparency we have to opening up websites and communication activities about what's going on around town, and even the private notifications that go out there. But, you know, the city, i- if, if, if the school's developing something and we hear about it, and we're supposed to fly our three hundred houses around the area, I mean, we don't do that. And if we do it for somebody, we don't do it for somebody else that can just open up a can of worms. But I think as a win-win, you know, I, I don't see this section of the council chambers today. I, I see one council chambers, and we're both in the room. And I would think that future development at the school, now that I'm aware of it anyways, I just want to invite you to help us and help the community know what's going on before we break ground going forward, and that's for Porterville Unified School and Burton. And, and let's just work together as, as a city to, to make it the great place we all want it to be, the great place we know it is and the great place we want it to be. That's my final thought, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. That being said, did you have one more comment?
I was gonna make a motion.
Please do.
Well, it's, it sounds like we're going word of mouth, but I want to trust our partners in the community that you'll follow through with the, the fence that we've talked about. I'll make a motion to go forward with the staff recommendations to vacate College Avenue and then set the process for taking on Triumphant Road.
A second. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Is there any further discussion on the dais? Please do it now.
I'll be brief if I may.
Okay.
So, again, this can come back to us if it's voted, I mean, I know it's been-
It will. It will absolutely come back, because the resolution's not in front of you to vacate.
Right.
It will come back at the time of acceptance of the two roads, correct?
Look forward to hearing an update on the project and to hear it at a later time. That's correct.
Well, what I think, what I think Javier would like is a vote on this to, to go ahead and move, move forward the process to bring forth that resolution to vacate. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
If, if I may add, council, Streets and Highway Code Section 8324 does provide, which should make you feel better, the resolution of vacation might provide, may provide that the vacation occurs only after conditions required by the legislative body, in your case, you have been satisfied, and may instruct the clerk that the resolution of vacation not be recorded until the conditions are satisfied.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a vote, I mean, not a vote, a motion on the floor with the first and a second, and we've had the discussion. Call for the vote. It passes unanimous, five zero. Thank you. All right. Now we will go on to scheduled matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two scheduled matters before you this evening. The first is a consideration of letter of support of Senate Bill 1414, crime solicitation of a minor, and Deputy City Manager Ridenhour will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth and Honorable Mayor and City Council. During the other matters at our, at the city council meeting on April 17th, the council approved Councilmember Meister's request to discuss Senate Bill 1414 as a scheduled matter at tonight's meeting. Senator Shannon Grove introduced SB 1414 in February along with two of her colleagues, Senators Anna Caballero and Susan Rubio. SB 1414 proposes to strengthen protections for minors, minor victims by making the act of soliciting agreeing to engage in or engaging in any form of commercial sex with a child a felony offense, with sex offender registry required on repeat offenses. Under existing law, a person who solicits or agrees to engage in, or who engages in any act of prostitution with the intent to receive compensation, money or any, anything of value from the other person is guilty of a disorderly conduct or misdemeanor. The bill is currently in the committee process, and as amended by the Public Safety Committee, we require that the defendant who solicited a minor be eighteen years of age or older. The bill would, if the person solicited was under sixteen years of age, make the offense punishable as a wobbler by imprisonment in county jail for not more than one year and a fine not to exceed $10,000, or by the imprisonment in the county jail for sixteen months or two or three years. Existing law also requires that persons convicted of certain specified crimes to annually register as a sex offender as specified for a term of ten, twenty, or thirty years. This bill will require a person who is eighteen years of age or older, on or after January 1st of 2025, is convicted of and who has prior convictions for soliciting a minor as specified, to, to annually register as a sex offender for the term of ten years, and at the time of the offense, if the person was more than ten years older than a solicited Staff worked, so just want to thank Assistant Chief Bartow, who took the lead on a lot of the research on this, as, as well as other staff, and reached out to Senator Grove's office and worked through. And tonight, there is an attachment, there is a draft letter, as well as the built, the, the text of the bill, as well as a status that, that shows the amendments that are made. As noted, there was amendments made during the, the Public Safety Committee that changed the, the bill. And so in such, you'll see language in the draft letter that, that notes what Senator Grove's staff recommended to city staff in this, that, that the letter state, and you'll see that in the draft letter at the bottom of the letter, that the support, Senator Grove supports the bill as she presented it to the Public Safety Committee. Staff has available questions.
I'm gonna thank you for that report, and I want to thank you for the information. Assistant Chief Bartow for the work that you put behind this as well. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I'm going to bring it to council and see how, what they wish to proceed. Councilmember Belton, do you have any questions in this, or any?
Yeah, I'll make a brief comment. I try to follow all of our links that we get from the League of California Cities. They update us on all the bills that, as an organization, they help all the cities as a whole. And there's some great ones in there, you know, and if, as an organization, if they're supportive or not supportive, a lot of them. There was some great on fentanyl, some other drugs, and some other things that unfortunately a lot of communities are dealing with. I was hoping to see this bill in there, and unfortunately, I didn't see it, but there's a lot of great ones still. In our area, I saw Tulare County sheriffs have posted a lot of social media information about sex trafficking and even human trafficking in, in our area. And, you know, whether we do this as a whole or, or individually, this is something I'll continue to, to support. It's unfortunate, the problems in our society, and especially when it comes to sexual crimes for minors, or even just abuse of minors, has a long-term effect in our community and in these families and individuals. We see it in a lot of vulnerable, whether it's low income, broken families, you know, single parenting homes, whatever it might be. So again, you know, this is one of these things, you know, that does impact our, our city. We don't necessarily get to vote on it, but this is a little bit of our ability as, as either as a whole or individually, to let the other political members in our state know that they do have support for their efforts. So I know I'll be voting on it, I just, you know, just thank for the opportunity just to address some things that aren't necessarily, we get to vote on necessarily, but also just support overall in our community and our state.
Councilmember Wyrock?
I'd like to thank Councilmember Meister for bringing this item to the council and for the advancement that we've had through the different members of staff and, and actually elected officials' offices, in particular Senator Grove. You know, reading through the staff report, you know, it talks about, in the second paragraph, proposes strengthening protections for minor victims. And when I read the word minor, I underlined it, does it mean somebody less than eighteen years old, or people that aren't harmed too badly? By making, and then it goes on to say, "By making the act of soliciting agreeing to engage in or exchange any form of commercial sex with a child." Goes down to the fourth paragraph, says the bill is currently in the committee process, and as amended by the Public Safety Committee, the Public Safety Committee has made some recommendations and some amendments to it, would require the defendant, the defendant who solicited a minor be eighteen years of age or older. So if you're not quite eighteen, how does that affect you? Do you get off? The bill would if the person solicited was under sixteen, but if you're sixteen years and one day old as a victim, not as a victim, but you're under eighteen years old as a criminal, it seems like there's a, an open path there for this group in that age range that might have a wobbler opportunity in the court. And so I, I don't know enough about this, but it just seems like, you know, people more up to date with the laws and things have put this forward. And again, I want to thank Councilmember Meister for bringing this to the council and for trying to help us get the position of this council out to the entire state of California and to our community, that these types of crimes won't be tolerated. And in Porterville, I really appreciate the efforts of our law enforcement staff, all the work that they do, and I know that they'll do all that they can to help enforce this law. I hope it gets ratcheted down a little bit more tightly, but I support the letter. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Well, when bringing this forward, it was at the, it actually was amended the day of that I brought this forward, and, and my hope was that there would be a little more fight as far as taking it, because this same committee shut down SB 14 last year, which made human trafficking a felony. And it was shut down by the same Public Safety and Health Committee. And so they're a bit extreme, in my opinion, on, on certain issues. And with these amendments that we're talking about, the sixteen years of age makes the offense punishable as a wobbler, which is, can be a misdemeanor for the first crime, and, and I can't remember if it's a second crime, it's still a misdemeanor. Correct me if I'm wrong. But what it does is it incentivizes cartels and gang-affiliated organizations to utilize the youth in, in performing these crimes. And, and we see that through, you know, regular crime, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me, we see that through crime on the streets and, and different angles that these people use, because they know that as a minor, it is a slap on the wrist. And, and so that is why Shannon Grove no longer supports the bill. She, she, I'm not gonna read the letter of support, but she, she asked for us to add that we support the SB 1414 as proposed by Senator Grove in the Senate Public Safety Committee. If there continues to be more fight, Shannon said she'd reach out to me and ask for our support in that sense, as far as taking it to the governor and the Public Safety, Health and Committee, but at this point, this is her stance on it. I also, Assistant Chief Bartow, reaching out to Senator Grove's staff, I appreciate it. And then I, I also see that you reached out to Tulare County District Attorney, which she supports this as well. So I, I greatly appreciate it. I, I think that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just two things. One, thank you, staff, for including the actual bill with the changes so that we could see those in front of us. And on the letter, I feel good, I, I like it's well-written and agree with it. No questions or comments.
I just want to say thank you, because what you, well, some people in the community don't know is that I have been an advocate on domestic violence awareness for many years. I want to say over thirty-five plus years, and am certified as a victims advocate to help them in a system with their safety plans and their exits. And it's very important, because once upon a time, and law enforcement, it was different years and years ago, when they would come to the house to many victims, and it was pretty much, "This is a husband and wife issue. It's a domestic issue, and you guys need to take care of it yourselves, because there's nothing we can do," at that time, many years ago, many years ago. And who was the ones that were suffering? It was the children. The children were suffering with the behaviors of their parents, or it could be a stepfather, or it could be somebody that was living there, or it could also be that they were elsewhere. So once again, you took the time to bring this, and you don't wear signs, you know, that you've been a victim or what. We've seen it firsthand when they've come to the in-house and you see it. And it's not a certain category, it's everyone. You find out later on, it's the children who are the victims, and then it's not just women who are the victims, it's the men who are the victims, and you move on, and it's gone on for many years. And for the longest time, it wasn't talked about. When this came to the table, of course, this is something that is important. I want to thank the research that was done on the bill, that the bill was brought to the table, and I will put the emphasis that it is important to support it as proposed. And I have no problems having, signing it, the draft letter, and submitting it, just so that you're aware of that. So I'm good with this.
If we're good on conversation, I'll make a motion. And, and the main thing is trying to educate the community on this stuff, right? And bring it forward, because not everybody pays attention to these bills. So I, if there's any other discussion, I, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay.
All right. So I'll make a motion to go forward with the draft letter of support for Senator, Senate Bill 1414, crime solicitation of a minor.
And I'm gonna go ahead and second that. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? If not, let's call for the vote. Passed unanimously, five zero. Moving on.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last item this evening is the implementation of Ordinance Number 1905. The city is preparing to implement, as you know, Ordinance 1905, which regulates unsafe and unauthorized camping and storage of personal property, protection of critical infrastructure, and mitigation of harm to the public's health, safety, and welfare. Ordinance 1905 was adopted on April 16th and will become effective on May 16th. As the council is aware, the city council, legal council, and staff have devoted significant time to discuss and develop this ordinance, becoming, as I said, effective on May 16th. It is now appropriate to prepare for its implementation as well as to designate individuals' roles, develop protocols and forms, and continue coordination with service providers. It is staff's recommendation that the implementation be a scaled approach as departments increase staffing, acquire necessary equipment, and finalize discussions to ensure that a new operator for the National Guard Armory is secured to allow for expanded services by agencies experienced in providing services for people experiencing homelessness. A summary of implementation steps that the city proposes to take pending council guidance consists of, in no particular order, one, logistics. An interdepartmental team will work through the questions and also develop protocols of standard operating procedures for city employees, including procedure for handling storage of personal property and referral to services. Number two would be training concurrently with education and prior to enforcement. All enforcement teams such as code enforcement, the police department personnel, SMART Team, and Parks Department will need to train all personnel on the new ordinance to ensure compliance and proper execution of such. The third would be the public information and education piece, which is to develop easily disseminated educational and reference materials for city employees, community members, and individuals experiencing homelessness. In coordination with service providers, city staff will perform continued outreach, communication, and education of the regulations to individuals experiencing homelessness and to the community on the new ordinance. The focus will be on voluntary compliance and referral to available resources, first in enforcement as a last resort. The fourth item is the prioritization. Strategic locations must be identified in order for staff to successfully address the areas of highest concentration, sensibility, risk to public health, safety, and welfare. Council direction is needed to establish these priorities. Some examples would include major corridors where schools are located, such as along Henderson Avenue, Morton Avenue, Olive Avenue, and commercial districts such as the Downtown Zone District and Waterways. This would help have an organized execution of the ordinance. The fifth item would be enforcement, and the city will work to obtain voluntary compliance, as I said previously, with referral to available services. And then the last item that we are looking at is ongoing review to establish regular meetings with team members, to brainstorm solutions to unanticipated issues that will arise indefinitely. Quadrant maps. We did provide quadrant maps that are in line with those quadrants that are identified by PD that they currently use in law enforcement. So we use those same boundaries. And those were attached to the staff report reflecting the areas where camping is not allowed, including residential zones and buffers of up to 200 feet around critical infrastructure. And additionally, a map outlining possible prioritization based on the examples I had mentioned previously. Those were, that was also provided to visualize a first phase that includes those locations, such as the corridors with schools. And additionally, a draft resolution will be brought forward, which would seek to approve the designation of specified locations as critical infrastructure. And that would be coming forward at a future meeting based on direction provided by the council. So with that, we seek that the council will provide direction on the implementation of Ordinance 1905 and specifically with the prioritization of locations for the phased implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, counsel. How do you, I'm going to bring it to, just to the dais and see where it's directed. I'd like to go with this. Thank you for the report. Any comment? Councilmember Beltran, any question?
Gosh, we're getting, nearing the finish line of this long but well-developed ordinance. Just personally, I listened to the, it was the May 24th oral arguments of the grants pass when it came before the Supreme Court. And it was, in mind, was listening to it, was what ordinance had to do with what some of their arguments were on what was legal and or questionable. Although it's not the same, they did talk about, you know, the criminalization versus the just citation of it. And it was really interesting to hear both sides. But I believe in just the spirit of the law is kind of what we're trying to walk that fine line of not making it a criminal offense, but more, again, at the end wording here is voluntary compliance. But again, with what we're doing with the Armory, the Navigation Center, multifaceted efforts. One thing I thought was great is speaking with the SMART Team recently, is I believe they said they've only had two arrests over the last five months because they're building that rapport and trying to get that voluntary compliance, educating them on where they're allowed to do and what they're not. And this will give, I think, a little bit more teeth and effort in helping them, along with businesses and other entities that are having to deal with this situation. But overall, just a great summary of all that effort over the last probably year, maybe longer. And I'm having trouble with the map because of my situation, but it looks great. So thank you.
We tried to do the patterns and it was such a large, it was really, it was too small. The thought was there.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock?
I was speaking to a law enforcement officer up and around the city of San Jose, and he shared with me how they take inventory of individuals that they need to move on to another location or who may be, you know, one of the two that were arrested in the last five months. And the body cam played a big role in it. They have their rehearsed interaction speech. And a lot of times when they're asked, what do you want us to do with your property? There's a lot of times when they don't respond and you just want your property thrown away. You want us to just dispose of it. It's amazing how many times they acknowledge that that's what they wanted. But the body cam seemed to help with the inventory control. And he shared the additional hidden costs of, you know, the cleanup that I know will come across as time goes on. But I applaud the council and the staff for developing such a great, and our legal team, you know, Julia, for all your efforts in this. If nothing else, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Meister?
Well, great work. And I know this is at the point of direction. And so for us, we have to figure out where our priorities are, where we want to start enforcing, correct? And is it the Waterways? Is it the schools? Is it the commercial districts, downtown zone districts? Are we, we're just focusing in on one area in the beginning, right? Are we trying to do all these areas at the same time?
So I believe we can do a few areas at one time, not just one. So what we're looking for is directions to what you see presented tonight is what staff's interpretation of the conversations that have been having at council is to emphasize and prioritize the downtown area as well as areas in front of school and then the major commercial corridor.
And I support that, that approach, right? We're not going to solve this all in one day. This is a slow walk and I agree with that approach. I also have a feeling what's going to end up happening is because there, some of these individuals experiencing homelessness don't want to follow rules. They don't want the help. And so as we offer areas like the Navigation Center and the Armory, they are not going to comply. And so what's going to end up happening is we're going to, I don't know if the right word is push, but we're going to enforce the ordinance, the law of our city charter, and then they will go to the river or wherever it is that they go to next. And so it's going to be pushing people around in a sense. And so I do like the approach of downtown, the, I better say this right, the schools and the commercial districts. I really like that approach. That's where I'm leaning on this direction. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I like the summary of implementation steps and also the areas that are listed. I can't think of anything additional. I think those, that covers everything that we discussed as priorities to start. I really, as I'm, as you were reading, I was just thinking it'll be really helpful to get updates. So I saw that you included that in, that you're going to be doing ongoing review. And I think that's the only thing we can do is, is kind of just wait and see how it all goes and then where we need to adjust, just kind of like we've talked about all along. So other than that, I mean, I don't have any other direction. I feel like what we have here tonight feels like a good, good place to start.
I don't have any further comments than what's been already said because I am very good with the information that was brought to us here and I am, we need to start and we need to start slow and then we need to move in the direction. So I hope that we have provided you with enough information. Have we done that? Have you, have you?
We'll keep refining it.
Yes, Mayor.
Of course, of course. Well, then there is no action that needs to be taken because we have provided staff with recommendations. All right, I think we're doing right along, moving right along. Mr. Skiles, I'm watching you. AB 1234 reports, and we're going to move right through those very quickly because the first three are mine. TCAG, I only placed this as a holdover. At the last meeting, I reported out the two most important things that the Tulare County Association of Governments, that the chair and the vice chair roles have reversed, where you now have a council member as the chairman and you have a board supervisor. So it's Rudy Mendoza and Dennis Townsend in the positions of chair and vice chair. And I just highlighted that we had pulled an item with regard to LTF funds and discussion will be brought back when we have more information. Tulare County Task Force on Homelessness on April 17th, Claudia Calderon and I attended a very long meeting. And again, I reiterate that she and I had sat on an hour and a half filling out the survey and they were barely putting an emphasis on another goal and it hasn't moved very rapidly. So there's really nothing to report that we will continue to update once they provide more information on the strategies. As far as Tulare Economic Development Corporation of April the 18th, we did not attend the meeting, but I will tell you that the strategic planning session is scheduled for May the 15th for this committee. And I believe you received an email with regard to the economic development on May the 10th, where the TCEDC will be hosting Didi Moyes of the governor's office. So if you plan to attend, we need to let Holly know because she will make the reservations for us. Flag Day Committee, Councilmember Meister?
Madam Mayor, if I could roll Flag Day Committee Number Four and Number 11 together into one?
Okay.
I did miss the meeting today, but I did get a update. So as far as monies, we have $3,228. We have invited the rodeo queen, veterans queen, and Cinco de Mayo queen. The proclamation that you will read has been submitted. Rico, city employee Rico, is going to be working with Chambers to provide the flyers. The jumpers are confirmed. And other than that, I have nothing else to report. It's all the same. It's dedicated to Ed Florrie. Contacts have been made and we're still waiting on a member of the committee to request the closure of Olive Street. So that's one last thing that we need to finish up. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes care of that. Tulare County Regional Transit Agency Board Meeting, Councilmember Wyrock?
Thank you. The RTA met on April 22nd at 4:00 PM at the agency's office in Visalia, California. We had a quorum. We had the Pledge of Allegiance. We opened it up to public comment and there was none. There were some reports from the Executive Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, and the Operations Committee. The consent calendar included the minutes of March 18th and monthly ridership summary, and it was approved. Action and discussion items, we reapproved the board committee structure. There was some discussion about how many actual board committees we should have with the small size of the board. It seemed like there was a lot of discussion that if, for instance, we're, there's a board of eight and if there's three or four people on a subcommittee, do they discuss and truly share everything back with the executive committee? So they wanted to reevaluate the committee makeup and whether we should have those. So the staff's going to bring back some more information so that transparency between these subcommittees, if they are allowed to exist, are to continue changes. There was an action to approve some finances, and I'll just go down the list here, an amendment three to the budget and capital improvement program, grant management update. There was an information item, but there was another action. The first action was to reapprove the board committee structure. The second was to receive and file preliminary financial statements as provided in the package. The third action was to approve an allocation request for LCTOP monies from 2023 and '24. There was an action for a resolution approving the budget and capital improvement program for 2023 and '24. There was an action to approve transport service no-show policy. You call for a transit and you're not there when it picks you up. There was a discussion on that. Those did not pass unanimously, but there was only one vote against it. And I gave all the votes against all of these actions during the meeting. But there was another, other business item where there was some information about due to the finances of it. There was a request for an agency to consider some repayment of a loan. And that didn't pass initially, but then that was approved. After that, we received the director's report and then some requests from board members for future agenda items. There was a closed session with no report out from the closed session. There was, and a German, and there was a discussion about, and it's one of my next reports for the Tulare County Transit Agency Finance Committee of April 25th. That was canceled. They did not hold that. And that's my report for the TCRTA.
Thank you. Military Banner Program Committee, Vice Mayor?
Yes. The Military Banner Committee met April 24th at 11:00 AM. Minutes were approved from the previous meeting, which took place October 10th. The first scheduled matter was an update on the 2024 Military Banner Program. There are 50 honorees for 2024, making the total 985 banners since the program's inception in 2016. This is the first year there were no KIA applications. The banners from 2019 are up for renewal. Of the 159, 86 have decided to renew and they have their banner go back up. Next, statistics were provided on various types of military banner service calls received from January through April. On average, three work orders per week occurred. These range from banners that have fallen due to wind gusts and banners and hardware that may be damaged due to vehicle and banners and hardware that may be damaged due to vehicle-related accidents and other circumstances. The final agenda item was discussion on the actual 2024 Military Banner Program Ceremony. That ceremony will take place May 24th at Centennial Park at 12:00 PM. There will be a presentation of colors, special music from a high school stage band, and the recognition of honorees and more. That meeting adjourned 11:37 AM. Next meeting is scheduled for October 9th.
Thank you. Moving right along. Internal Audit Committee Meeting, that was a very productive meeting. We met on the 24th of April. The minutes of January the 24th were approved. The review of the PSW lease agreement, the Audit Committee reviewed the agreement. It had been sent to PSW for review, revisions, et cetera. It was returned and brought to this meeting. Legal councils on both sides presented changes. Internal Audit Committee accepted the revisions and changes. The agreement will be revised. There will not need to be brought back to the Audit Committee to review once they've looked at it. It will be brought to council. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. Then the review process for city community events. Last year at our October meeting, we began the review process of the city community process civic events. At that time, we were provided with many samples of special permit event applications from different cities. And it was, we looked at the current process, discussed fees, et cetera. That was good information. At that time, it was a discussion only. At this meeting, we were given a current update with more condensed information. I want to say thank you to your RICO for putting the work involved into it and gathering the information for us. We reviewed it and there were several questions during this presentation as to define the community civic events and special events and whether specific to private business reference points and cost per service, regulatory language. That is where that is at and it will be brought to our next meeting with the elements, which is scheduled for May 29th at 4:00. All right. Moving right along with the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency Finance Committee Meeting.
That was canceled.
Okay. That one was canceled. How about Link, Councilmember Beltran?
That was not canceled. So Link Committee met on May 1st at 3:00 PM across the street in the Thurman Building. The meeting was called order at 3:05. There was a brief welcome and introduction. One of the new members, along with KTHA, was a past employee who was brought back in of the name of Jose Luis Gonzalez. And he'll be responding to the Porterville Link event. So it's great because there's been some events that we've had, which was every other Wednesday at the Navigation Center where KTHA staff was not around. So it's great that there's, will be a dedicated person there now. The minutes were approved from the previous meeting. There was no change to budget. The brief update from the Navigation Center was that all beds are now full. Year-to-date, there have been 964 unduplicated people that have come for services and help. Two residents were recently housed. There are nine currently pending. And year-to-date, there have been 14 individuals housed. Next was the Links Services Subcommittee. We, this committee is working on a Mother's Day project for May 10th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM across the street at the Spanish Seventh Day Adventist Church. This provides an opportunity for, I believe there are currently nine mothers who are at the Navigation Center. This event will provide an opportunity for them to gather with their children, their family. Because the Navigation Center has a low barrier of entry, there may be some residents there that may have some legal issues. So we have a safe place across the street where these families can gather. So this is to honor mothers. I can't wait for the next city council meeting to give an update on how that went. We've had a previous Easter Day event. This isn't part of the normal Link Services. This is something different that's done outside the funding sources by donations of the community. Part of these projects are restoring these individuals and giving them an opportunity to heal wounds and reconnect with family. Because they're unable to do that at the Navigation Center. So that's part of the Subservices Committee activities that they're working on. In other matters, we're continuing to work on getting medical services there. We have three different medical entities that will be rotating, coming through to provide health screenings. We're also looking for education opportunities with the Porterville College as well as Porterville Adult School to help those who want to further or finish their education. Another one is, of course, the law and court assistance for many of them that are, don't have any guidance or how to take care of some issues that are outstanding. It was said the next meeting will be on June 5th at 3:00 PM. The meeting was adjourned at 3:52.
Thank you very much. Good information, especially the events that are being done. Thank you. The Eastern Tulip Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Councilmember Wyrock.
The meeting of the Board of Directors occurred on Thursday, May 2nd. Called order a little bit after 2:00 in the afternoon here in the council chambers. Opened it up with public comment. There was no public comment. It was reported by the manager that we'd hired a new controller. I believe her name is Amanda Carlson with an early May start. They're looking forward to welcoming her. There were some general announcements and we passed the consent calendar, which included the April 4th meeting of the board, the minutes from that, and a ratification of the bills that have been paid. That all passed unanimously. Tier one penalty enforcement was some information that we discussed. And there was quite a list of people that were a little bit late in paying. Two people were removed from that list. Quite a few had opted out of some of the accounts that are used to track the water consumption. But we reviewed the list and they had cleaned the accounts and they continue to work. The staff continues to work with people that are delinquent. They can just log in and even make a phone call. There was some discussion, though, that the phones aren't being answered. So there was some discussion later about providing some additional support so that we could timely get back to the people that are calling in and leaving messages. A lot of telephone tag. There was a review of the Eastern Tulip GSA specific deficiencies as outlined in the State Water Resources Control Board Draft Report. The executive summary was not a complete list, but they listed and we discussed a few items that were on the list. And there were some mapping areas that needed to be looked at a little bit more. We had some discussion about interconnected surface water and there was none of those that even exist in the GSA. So even though that's in the draft report, really didn't apply. We moved on with a presentation and review of Thomas Harder and Company's land subsidence areas in 2023. It was presented by a gentleman by the name of Ben Lewis. The compaction of the ground is lower than before, going down lower. And when the water recharges, sometimes it's higher. So it just depends on the area where they're doing the evaluation. He reported that there was no recoverable land subsidence in this period. There's a request that, you know, in order to stop some subsidence, you almost have to shut pumps down. Four Creeks mentioned meter installation progress. They're making notifications to landowners to try to get more meters, put on some more wells. And there was a comment by Don Davis from the Front Water Authority. He appreciated Tom Harder's report. The positive participation with qualified persons is what they're hoping to bring together to resolve some of the outstanding issues that some in the public and on this diocese might be aware of in the courts. Moving on, we had an agenda item to approve the 10th amended Eastern Tulip GSA rules and regulations. So it's quite a few pages on how to know how the Eastern Tulip GSA works and how the people that have wells and use water in the GSA are supposed to pay their bills and track their water consumption. The 10th rules, before they were, before we voted on it, there was a package that was provided to the board. They had a stakeholders committee that made some recommendations to the board. And then once the stakeholder committee was completed, they provided a document that had their suggested modifications to the 10th amended rules and regulations. That went to the executive committee. And the executive committee took out some of the stakeholder comments that I felt were pretty important. And then the staff recommendation just kind of passed along the executive commitment. And one thing that was left off, pardon me, that I didn't have it right here pulled up, but it was about metering of wells. And so there was a vote on the 10th rules as staff was presenting that didn't include metering of the wells. And I did not vote to approve that, but it did pass with a vote of five to three. There were two other members of the board that kind of saw it my way and the need to meter more wells to track how much water is being consumed in the area and by who. We went on to talk about invoicing and accounting. There's the availability for people to use the water market on Basin Safe. There's over 1,800 accounts representing 139,000 acres. And if you have water, but you're not using it, you can go into your Basin Safe account and make that available. There was a report on state advocacy efforts and there was no questions from that, but a great report provided by Ashley Walker, who's a senior policy advisor at Nosman LLP. She's working really hard to represent the interests of all of the stakeholders in the Eastern Tulip GSA, including the city of Porterville. Had a report for the outreach efforts that was given to us by our general manager. He's had a lot of participation in these different outreach meetings and he'll continue to do those. There was a total of zero wells that were mitigated since our last meeting. There was some land subsidence, landowner outreach. There was just, you know, a report that we received again from our general manager. They're doing site visits. They're trying to get access to the wells to get meters and it's just hard for that to occur. So they're working on ways to make that happen a little bit more. The stakeholder committee, we talked about that already and the revised committees. And the finance committee did not meet for a second month in a row. This time the chair was not available. And we'll be trying to figure out a way to get the finance committee to meet again. There was a comment made by a member of the board related to our old director Knight, who sits on the committee. And I'm not sure of your title right now, Michael, Assistant City Manager, I think.
I answer here, you please.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, you've had some pretty powerful elected officials and agency officials within earshot of you. And just the information that you've shared has been, and I've seen some of it, but lately, over the last month, I haven't been a part of any of your presentations. But I want to thank you personally and on behalf of the city for having all the facts in your head, the presentation's prepared, and you're available to answer even technical questions that anybody in the truck or out on the right of way might have for you. So thank you for your efforts and your advocacy. Would you like to add anything about the GSA that you've been involved in lately?
I missed that meeting, the last meeting, so I apologize for that.
Thanks for working with the state as you are. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go on to Oral Communications. Is there someone that would like to come forward in Oral Communications? No? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll go on to other matters. Councilmember Beltran.
As the weather gets better, I just, I love how vibrant our community gets. The parade was wonderful for those of all in attendance and participated. It's just a great opportunity to celebrate other cultures and heritages in our community. And just what I love seeing is just families, people you don't get to see on a normal day-to-day errands and activities. But it was just great to see the turnout there. The weather was just wonderful. Briefly wanted to touch on the Links update was, you know, how those people are being housed and one of the earlier consent items about the permanent supportive housing, how we're able to help fund that to get vouchers. That really helps, you know, progress people through the system. They're not just sitting there with no hope. So thank council for that continued efforts. There is progress on that. The other thing with inflation, you know, as we, next week, we're going to have our capital improvement projects and priorities that we're going to be addressing and figuring that out as a city. You know, we see it, well, at least I see it as an individual with my family and when we're making decisions on where we're going to go out to eat, how often we go out to eat, where we vacation, and what we do coming up for the summer. But as we see these projects come, it's just, I'm thankful for some of the measures that we have. I know people may not appreciate the tax that we have in our area. It was voter-supported, wasn't a member, a matter of the council voting for it. But seeing the expenses that, whether it's the refuse trucks, the, you know, the firearms for the police department, fire trucks, infrastructure, whatever it might be, are just costing so much right now. And I know people, you know, are commenting about the roads or other projects that are going on. And just behind the scenes, staff is working really hard on either grants or making the most of the finances that we have to work with. But it's shocking to see how much, I almost want to call it criminal, how much some things are costing. And it's going to impact our community. But just know that staff and us as council members are trying to be good stewards of those funds. Let's see. In ending, I was going to bring up, if we could, on the next agenda to bring the funding for some of these homeless events that we're doing. Just to summarize what the efforts are, taxpayer funds can be utilized in different ways and everything, you know, John Lawless used to tell us, what's the color of the money? Because it has to only be utilized in certain ways. And unfortunately, there's some things that fall through the gaps. As much as we have a network of safety, some things just fall through. And what these events are outside of the spectrum of services are individual relationships and helping these individuals, like I said earlier, connect with their families. It's really neat to see some of these individuals connect with their children who they don't normally get to visit and spend time with, but also removing them, even if it's just across the street from that daily environment and that grind. What I've seen is sometimes they form their own community and which is great for support and they can empathize with each other. But at the same time, it also creates a bond sometimes that can sometimes harm themselves. They don't realize that they are so connected to this new community that when they have an opportunity to maybe thrive or succeed on their own, I wouldn't say that they're afraid of, but they're uncomfortable because they don't have a relationship with other peoples. They're emotionally bonded to each other. So some of these events help either Link Committee or other volunteers reconnect those relationships. And we're seeing that progress in that more phone calls, more visits, interacting with each other when they normally maybe would be months between interactions. And so it's a very nominal fees. We're trying to, there's a lot of donations behind this, but there is a cost. And so I'd love to bring something for council to consider for discretionary funds. Very nominal whether it's, we could discuss it later on and I'll try and bring kind of a rough budget to what that might be. But just bring it to next council's agenda.
Councilmember Beltran, that is a good thought. Now, I'm looking at our city manager and legal counsel as to, I'm looking. I'm looking.
It's work.
No. No, no.
We're watching a meeting on YouTube.
Share with the class. No, the question that I had, we, we need to put it on the agenda. Do we place it on the agenda? He's asking, as a scheduled matter, for the special meeting or the next council meeting?
For discretionary funds for some of these links events.
So, what you guys can do, if you'd like, what we typically do, why don't we, you could make, propose a motion to have it placed on as a scheduled matter, and we can take the action now, because as you guys have.
That.
We can take the one exception.
Exactly.
Take action and schedule something up.
So, you make the motion that, you've made a motion?
Yeah. Right. For the next council meeting, not the special study session.
Okay.
And, and what you, part of his motion, though, is you don't know the dollar amount you're, you're looking at, so.
No, we can discuss that at that time. I'll bring a rough idea of.
Gotcha.
How many events and what, yeah, we'll discuss it later.
All right. So, that the next council, so that is a motion. I'm going to second it. And we're not going to have a further discussion. Let's call for the vote.
That was funny to you, wasn't it?
We're moving right along. We're moving right along. I can't believe somebody chose 10:30. I don't know who that person was. Okay. Were you done with your other, okay, Councilmember White Rock?
You made the motion and you made the second, just we have it.
The mayor.
Mayor.
We won't try to multitask.
All right.
Yeah.
Appreciated the report out on the finances of the city and the stewardship of all the departments. We're coming into some time where we're seeing not as many tax dollars coming into the city and just really appreciate the care and consideration everybody has before we spend the money. And it shows. There's been some efforts on behalf of the Porterville Police Department. While they're always busy, and they're doing some great things, so I want to thank the chief and all of the, all the officers that serve our community so well. They're keeping drugs off the streets and just keeping the lawbreakers, trying to get them out of here. The fire department, I, I haven't had a chance to review the annual report. Looking forward to turning the pages of that and reading into that. Was very pleased that the residents were able to meet with Kern College and come to some agreement. That was a huge win, I think, for the whole city. Couple other quick things. I'd like to thank, I, I do this a couple of times a year, but the family behind all of our staff. If we didn't have their support, if you didn't have their support, it makes our jobs all the more difficult. So, please, on behalf of the city, thank your families for all that they do for us behind the scenes. Councilmember Meister and Councilmember Beltran and I attended the flag raising on the north side of town along 65. It was just, it was just neat. I was reflecting that. I didn't realize a church had to ask for rezoning. I thought you could just dig a hole in the ground and drop in some rebar and concrete, put a pole up and hoist a flag. But the way they went through the process was, was decent. And yet, you know, I, I heard, we heard comments earlier today that shouldn't, some nonprofits and churches maybe be allowed some flexibility, if you will. And, but, you know, they did the right thing, in my opinion, and that flag is beautiful. And, you know, just almost brought tears to my eyes seeing it go up. School season's wrapping up, and I think the teachers for their hard work. I was out at the Porterville Military Academy with a couple other council members at the, the star base. And just a whole lot of effort by a lot of people going to the children of this community. And I want to thank the teachers. Graduation's coming up. Want to wish all of the graduates the best of success into the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Well, I got quite a bit to report on, so bear with me here. Maybe the 10:30 might work. So, just start with the ugly. We talked about, you know, the vape pens, the vape products, the marijuana products that are now in our community and, and at our schools. And I had made a comment about my, my daughter seeing it and them actually charging $10 hit in the bathrooms in the, the high schools. And something that happened, two days later, she was pulled into, out of class and into the counselor's office to be questioned on it, which she reached out to me, and I was able to mediate or, or get in between that and, and talked with the counselor and, and just let her know the trauma that my daughter has received through her deciding not to wear a face mask and her being isolated in the classroom four days by herself and then unrolled on the fifth day and enrolled into independent study. And it is trauma. And so, when she gets called in the office, it is a big deal for her. So, of course, she, naturally, she reached out to her father and, and I was able to mediate that. I also reached out to Superintendent PUSD Nate Nelson, and we talked about the issue. The vape products is a real issue in our schools, and it's, it's all the campuses. He informed me that, that there was actually, while he was touring the schools at Porterville High School, one of the fire alarms went off because kids were smoking in the bathroom. And it's a real issue. He, he told me that it's been going on for multiple years, roughly around four years. So, it's before the time of our cannabis stores opening up. But I, I think it's a real issue that, obviously, it's out of our hands. Maybe we could change ordinance within the city, but there's a black market that's real. And that's why it was being seen well before then. I did request them, when I make a political statement, if he would keep it between us. He made the comment that the concern was that my daughter was uncomfortable, which I never said, but I, I will trust that that was his intentions, was making sure that my daughter was comfortable in the atmosphere that she was in. I don't know what the future will bring for the city and the cannabis industry, but it is a factor. And so, what, what I would like, and Chief Castillo, thank you for taking my phone call while you're on vacation. Greatly appreciate that. And just kind of giving me information on, on reporting and, and how it works here in the city between the, the school district. And what I would like to see in the future, and I don't, this will take cooperation with the school district and our, our police department, but is as they find these things, if they would report it to the city so that we could get it to our ad hoc committee, our cannabis ad hoc committee, and we could get real information on what's going on in our schools when it comes to the vape pens. Because we could, in our charter, not allow that kind of product. Will it affect, will it help? I don't know. But it's, it's, it's a big deal. And we want to do everything we can to, to protect the children. And, and so, at that, it's not all bad news with PUSD. We, I attended a Starbase event, just amazing. It was, it was great going around. I think it's Fred Donkey, one of the commanders there, just great man, shared his vision on, on what the future of the Starbase. We got to see the adjutant general, a lot of great people. And then, seeing the kids and what they were working on, I, it was kind of mind-blowing because I had to go to college to, to trade, trade schools to see some of the stuff these kids are working on. And, and so, to get them thinking that way at such a young age is just a, a great thing. And so, hats off to PUSD on that, that end. I also attended the Seventh Day Adventist Church. American Legion was there and, and putting up that new flag. And it is a glorious flag, either entering or exiting Porterville. It's, it's really awesome to see. Proposition 47, I, I want to thank my colleagues here for supporting that, the letter of support for Proposition 47. Working with Tim Ward, Dennis Townsend, and Alexandra Macedo, and then members in the community, Blessings of Liberty, and John Duran, I want to give him a shout out. They were able to get over 50 petitions signed fully. So, hats off to them, and we were able to get them turned in. So, I greatly appreciate all of them on those efforts. It's going to go on the ballot. And so, we have to educate the people on Proposition 47 and, and hopefully, we could get it to pass and, and actually make crime illegal again. April 25th, I went to the memorial quilt unveiling ceremony for victims of violent crime. It, it, it was, it was sobering, to say the least, to see the victims, the families. It was a, the convention center was filled with victims. There was a lot of tears. There was a lot of emotions. After the event, I, I took a tour around looking at all, all the quilts. And, and it was very heart-touching to see families and children crying and next to pictures of, of their loved ones. And, and you, you, you come away thinking, I, I wonder if they at least got justice. And as I walked around, I came across our fallen firefighters, Captain Figaroa and firefighter Jones. And my opinion, they didn't. And it's the hard truth. We live in wild times. We have to continue to fight. And that's, that's what I'd say on that, to, for that justice. Cinco de Mayo Parade was awesome, great event. It's always great every year, great celebrating that tradition with our community members. And then, want to give a shout out on the Porterville Fire Department Annual Report. Very well done. I, going over the numbers, EMS response were, so you got to be within five minutes for the NFPA standard. EMS response time, 74% of the time, we're within five minutes. Fire, we're at 80%. We're doing our very best, right, with what we got. And so, I appreciate that. You know, lessons learned from our fallen firefighters. We're taking actions. We're, we're picking up training. We're, we're doing things. There's only 8% of the things that were recommended that haven't been started. So, outstanding job on that as well. And for somehow, some reason, the man of the year made it in the yearbook here. So, congratulations again. And then, something that I just, I really commend city staff, and this kind of goes back to John Lawless and his commitment to succession and building within. And so, I, I want to just read a short segment here in Training Division. Throughout the year, the Training Division has been committed to succession training by conducting several professional growth exams, including acting engineering, engineer, excuse me, acting captain and acting battalion chief. We're assisting our personnel in gaining experience and knowledge in preparation for possible promotion when available. I think that is huge. I, it, all the way from the top to the bottom, right? If you're building up within, we have leaders, and we have people when, when, if we do have a situation where our city manager goes to a neighboring city, we could fill the void, and it's almost seamless. They, of course, we'll never fill the void of John Lawless, but you guys are killing it. So, thank you for that, and appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I just have a couple, but I, as council member was speaking about the vaping issues, I had a thought that, I work with a program that has, is in their fourth year of funding for vape education. And they're housed here in, in Porterville, but they, they provide services throughout the Central Valley with different agencies. And it's a lot of data and stats on, on youth and the usage. But I think what, and it, it's based on public health information. She's a public health, she has a PhD in, in public health, and then works with a lot of youth in different areas. It primarily is focused on Native American youth, but the statistics are in our, about all of our schools and counties. So, another thing that they did was resolutions and different actions with cities and counties. So, I can work with staff to put together, you know, maybe we could share some, just the data and information in a council meeting specifically towards like Tulare County and, and Porterville, if she has information there that would help. Other than that, I, I think that I, tonight, I just wanted to congratulate again Officer Medina on her award. And also, Poor Richards, obviously grew up loving Poor Richards since I was a kid and then a teen. And, you know, one of my favorite pizzas. And when I say Poor Richards outside of Porterville, they don't know what I'm talking about. But congratulations to them. I, I love, you know, seeing that they kept the look and, and all of that, and the same pizza over the years. So, just want to congratulate both of them for getting the awards. And thank you, Chief and Department, for the annual report. I looked through it right when I got it because I appreciate all the statistics and information from the previous year. And it gives us something to really share with the community about our knowledge about the, the fire department. And then, I, the last thing is just acknowledging all the graduates and graduations that are starting and about to continue throughout the next month. Just be safe and, you know, looking forward to the future for all these young people. And the last one I want to congratulate is my daughter Jennifer, who just went through a native ceremony at her school, San Diego State University. And then, this weekend, she'll be attending her, will all be attending her graduation commencement. She'll be receiving her master's in social work. So, just want to say, yes.
Congratulations.
And that's it. Rose, thank you for staying. There's so many things that do go on in Porterville and elsewhere. The Starbase Open House was incredible. I am in awe because when the Porterville Military Academy didn't exist, it was important for many of us to partake and become a part of the campaign to make it come to fruition. Initially, we had a lot of resistance because a lot of people thought, being their retired school district employee, a lot of people thought that all the bad kids were going to go to the military school. They didn't see that foresight of the purpose, that there would be a curriculum and what it was. And it was very, it, it was that Starbase program, it's those kids that make the program. And it was very good for me to have talked to the adjutant general because I got to challenge him, presented him with a challenge coin, and he eventually had to get one from one of his staffers because he asked me if I knew what it meant. And I go, of course I did. That's why I gave it to you. Going on with that, thank you for including us in the fire station 72 remodel. A big difference. It looks so big when you go in there. It's very good, and it was very nice to see it. I did go see on that same day, I got a tour of the adult school because I had been invited to go see what was there, the, from when they moved, where they were housed over in the area of the adult school. The adult school used to be by the Military Academy, and they just moved over here. So, it was nice to tour it. Donnie Moore, thank you for including us in the City of Porterville Arbor Day. It was, you sent me to the wrong place initially, but I got there. I following your directions. I just went and found where the little tent was. This is one that has been going on for many years with the city of Porterville. I can remember when I first got on council, it took me back down memory lane, Cam Hamilton, Milt Stowe, and how important it was. And we were all a part of that. And that Home Depot came to the table to plant the trees on that day. So, thank you for all that work. We attended the San Joaquin Valley Policy Conference, well, I did, and Patrice and Jason and Claudia, we were all there. What was, and that was on the 29th and May the 1st. They had the keynote speaker, Olympic champion, Richard Kiki Torres, and they did an interview with him as to how he, what, it was just very warm felt, that it was so sincere as to his accomplishment. All of it was focused on transportation, the whole, the whole policy conference was focused on transportation. I had the privilege to moderate a breakout session, which was Partners in the Valley. And they had Brian Thoburn of the Edison Company and Peggy Egbuhi from the Pacific Railroad. That was an interesting session because it has to do with being a partner in the valley, and how does that connect with transportation? partner in the valley and how does that connect with transportation. And there were a lot of people, especially specific from Caltrans and surrounding cities that were in that. So all in all, the policy conference was really good. On May the 3rd, I was invited to attend the Porterville Military Pass and Review. It's one I've gone to every year, but it's wonderful to see the cadets at the year end, transition from going, from here to where they are and changing of the guard. And again, it was very, it was a very brief ceremony, but it was one good to attend. Cinco de Mayo Parade, I really love to participate in the Cinco de Mayo Parade. I know that a few years back, in one of the low riders, one of the, one of the owners, boy, he gave me a ride. And I, I always tell him every, do not touch the switches, please. I were hanging on for dear life, but it was a lot of fun. And then the following day, the Fiesta Dominguera. That was nice. It was good. And I only stayed for a brief moment. There was lots of food. I do want to share that today I attended the Board of Supervisor meeting, and it was very productive. They had an agenda item. And it was a request from one of the Board of Supervisors to consider the reorganization of the county's appointed to the Tulare County Regional Transit Board of Directors and take action either to remove the current person, remove, remove the current alternate, or to take no action. I went to testify on behalf of where we are in position with the TCRTA, specifically to state that on July the 1st, that the city council will be resuming their own transit operations and that how important this is a service to our community. And that I felt that unfortunately, it seemed that TCRTA has not really been willing to work with us on this transition. And not going into all of it, you can actually see it online. They recorded it. So if you want to see what the outcomes were, I'm going to share it. But I specifically said that I, I was going to be respectful and that the county appoint a representative to the TCRTA that shared our vision and our purpose, and that did happen. And I wanted to say at first, there was a recommendation made to continue the item, but that didn't happen because that, that failed. And so when they voted again, it was a 3-1-1, but there is a new representative to the TCRTA board. And I encourage you to watch the video of today's meeting toward the end on that item. So that's, with that being said, moving right along, I still can't believe Mr. Tree. I cannot believe this time, Mr. Tree. I want to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day weekend, all you moms and everybody else that, because that's coming up this weekend. And to remember, if you still have your mother, hang on to that memory because some of us don't. And going on with life. All right, Patrice.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to remind the council that you all are invited to our employee luncheon. It's a boot scoot and barbecue on Friday from 11:30 to 1:00 at the corp yard. So that'll be a lot of fun. And also, the Porterville Fair is coming up next week, beginning Wednesday through Sunday. So just a reminder for that. Jason, did you have something?
I do. Also, just want to provide a reminder that this weekend is the Spring Festival downtown. The Arts Commission will be having chalk art again. And so just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And just remember, if you need last minute gifts, we have a lot of great businesses downtown that you can buy something for your mother or your wife.
Okay. Does this mean Mr. Skiles wins? Well, meeting is adjourned.